Hello.
Hey there Toby.
All right, for once it's not my rooster.
Yeah, everyone's gonna get a little serenaded, sorry about that.
That's great, we live on an island.
Alright, so we're just waiting for spring and Slade to come back in.
Slade's there. Is Bob coming?
Yeah, I'm expecting Bob.
Yeah, he's on. Or at least, uh.
He's stalking.
Someone named Lori Hennessy's on. There's often his login. Can we have someone double check that this is streaming on YouTube or there's, I guess we also publish the link to the Zoom if people can't get the YouTube livestream? Once we start it.
Jody was troubleshooting some YouTube issues today because apparently if you use closed caption it it limits or has some limiting factors on the ability to stream. So, but not the ability to record.
Okay.
So, we are recording everybody, just to let you know, so. Let's see, is there anything else? Jody, can you share what you learned about YouTube or maybe what you work with?
Yeah, I learned that we cannot only do closed caption with with our streaming service and if we are using closed caption, we cannot stream at the same time. So, we are recording this and it will be linked up with our YouTube page as soon as possible.
Thanks, Jody. Okay.
Yeah, just let me know when you're ready to go.
So, Bob, Bob is here? Is that what I heard you say Toby?
I believe Bob is now here.
There we go.
Hi Bob.
Hi, everyone. I'm sorry, to the, to the public, meet the board Luddites, so my apologies, everyone.
And so, what about spring? Has spring got on?
I sent her the invite with the link again, so.
Did we give her a minute or should we go?
Well, let's give her a minute. That sounds good.
How are you doing Slade and Rebecca and Danny and Greg? My, my thoughts and prayers have been with you.
I'll let them. I guess.
It's been busy, thanks for asking, doing well. I bet, I bet it's been busy.
Lots of opportunities, yes.
Yeah, good leadership opportunities.
Thank you for getting all the stuff out so we could see it tonight.
Some monumental effort.
It's, it's been good. We got a great team, we have great staff. I think I said it to someone along the way, we are the right people in the right positions. So, it's a lot easier to do our jobs when when that's the case.
Tell me, do you have a favorite board member?
It's me. No, we're thankful for all of you and all of your work. Thank you.
I'm hoping, Reagan, are you texting the spring too or?
I haven't seen her come back yet, so. I don't know what. I know she was just finishing up her session, so she might be a little bit late in, so maybe we should just go.
Yeah, that sounds good. That sounds good.
All right. Well, thank you again, everyone, for coming and for the community is able to be with us for this session. As you probably remember from the last board meeting, we initially decided not to have a review of the plan, but when the reality of how much stuff was flying around this week and the decisions that we are going to make tonight and the decisions that we are not going to make tonight, it seemed like a good idea just to get the board together for a high level review of what it is we're doing in the regular board meeting as well as a quick overview of the components of the plan, some of which we're voting on tonight, others of which we are not. I know there's been a lot of traffic surrounding the schedule that was proposed today on the quarter system. We have a lot of feedback and concern about that. That is not being finalized tonight. So, I just want to let everyone know that, you know, that, that was distributed and it's there for feedback, which is what we're getting and that's what we want. And that's not set in stone. So, that may or may not change subject to the feedback and further work with our staff and our teachers and our administration. So, there's reasons for why it's the way it is and I'll let them explain that better when we get to the main meeting. My horses are contributing, but the point point of the session is really just to to try and get us all our minds around all this information that has come at us this last week and make sure everyone has an opportunity to get on the same page. Because in the meeting, we're going to hear a lot of the details from specific people in the district about the details that they are handling and their specialties. And I just didn't want the overview to get kind of lost in all the details and that's why we're here right now. So, with that, I'll let Slade take it away unless anyone has any questions at the opener. Now, mute my rooster.
Thanks, thanks Reagan. So, right, it, it is a good opportunity for all of us to get together and the, I, I think the overarching lesson from all the, all the planning and all the experience has been that we've seen real thoughtful decision making and, and planning around what's going to happen in the fall be sidelined or hijacked by new information. So, it always does feel like we are making the best decisions, given the best information, given the time that we have to make it in. And so, so I think that's just something to kind of, it's this filter now in my, in my brain. I, I don't want to say that I'm getting used to it. I can say that it still makes me uncomfortable to know that tomorrow I might have to send something out to you as the board or to our, to our staff that might be different than what they heard yesterday. But doesn't it seem like that's been the case since March when we, when we started this? And so, it, it is, it's, it's hard to keep up and I I feel sometimes most for those furthest away from the process because of the significant amount of details that are, that we engage in, that it be, it becomes a very difficult you know, cha, it's just a challenge to communicate it and make visible all the thinking behind our, our planning. And so, I, first of all, I just kind of appreciate people's patience with us and and, and kindness also. I, I saw a communication go out from Danny today that then emphasized that and and, and that's something that I want to, you kind of, there's, there you know, that's part of, that's part of our community's values and I, and I appreciate that. Reagan, I do, I did just hear, I'll just be honest, I did just hear something that was like, what? What did we just say? So, the, I know we, we're talking about the, the student schedules and that seems to be a, a real priority for our, our, our public. And I think that's important for us to, to listen today and I, there's lots of public comment. But the, I think when you started the board meeting about what are, what are we actually talking about today and voting on, the board really is voting on the the reopening plan and specifically meeting the OSPI requirements. And so.
I was referring to the resolution itself. I
Yeah.
I didn't understand that we were actually going to firmly adopt the quarter system, but if we are, that's why we're having this, this work session.
Yeah, yeah, it, it typically isn't the board, it typically isn't the board that adopts a quarter schedule or a bell schedule or, or student schedules. And so, you know, I think, I think we, we want the feedback and want the, the, a better understanding because since that's on everybody's mind, let's just kind of move, move into that discussion. The I'm, I'm certain you know, every district in the region has been contemplating ever since, what, three weeks ago when pretty much everyone made the decision to, to move to online. We're already positioned that way in our, in our initial reopening plan that we presented on the 19th. But we'll see language in the resolution tonight, kind of affirming that in the board. Basically, I'll be asking the board to take action from that recommendation, given all the information about safety. But ever since that happened from three weeks ago, I know our principals and leadership team, teacher leaders, teachers and certainly parents have been in this place of wondering, well, what's a day in the life of my student going to look like now that it's online? And we had a you know, in the springtime when we closed, we had the opportunity to engage with the reopening team. And, you know, the reopening team met four times before school closure. We'd met one time since then. And the task of that reopening team was really to, to help study what our students and staffs and families' experience was in that remote environment. And to learn from it. And so, you know, over you know, over the course of those four meetings, they helped design you know, surveys for parents and, and families and staff. And over that time, we had over 824 surveys that were received, which is guys, more, more cer, more feedback than we've ever received before. And we really wanted to know what we could do better in, in terms of student, staff safety, the distance learning, the teaching and learning and, and specifically some, you know, lots of questions around, not lots but questions around childcare. And, you know, I'm so thankful that we had close to 60, you know, staff and leadership and parents and students and community partners join that team and spend many hours collectively participating, you know, to provide feedback to our district leadership. And so, you know, we, we got overwhelming support. Lots of those ideas were, you know, they wanted recorded lessons and live lessons and key resources in one place and one-to-one devices. We wanted student-family tech help desks. We want, you know, one learning management system so that we're not, you know, on, on many platforms. We wanted student schedules that were, that had time for social-emotional learning supports. We had, we wanted to, we, we we wanted to have developmentally appropriate screen time and kind of balancing between live instruction and small groups and large groups. So, there was a lot of feedback that we received during that time and, and that, and that team analyzed it and and, and we, we, we've shared that in one of the docs tonight, you know, that, that summary of responses. But also want to add that during closure time too, our principals here were had been in contact with families and had listened to many stories of, of what had happened during spring closure and and learning from those stories and taking notes. And so, when we went into we, we were optimistic about the fall, but when we went into three weeks ago, when we knew that we were going to be operating fully remote, we had already given significant thought to the kinds of improvements that we wanted to make and had put those, you know, had started to mock up things in place. But all along, we wanted to make sure that that we want to, you know, work with our educators. And when you're in summertime, we knew that the first moment that we'd be able to get our PLC leads back, our teacher leadership teams back, was last Tuesday. And so, what that does, that, that just puts us in a, in a big time crunch because on Tuesday, they had to share information with their leadership teams, process that information, analyze it, synthesize it and come up with a decision on a, on a, on a student's schedule because parents and staff have been eager to know what those schedules are going to look like. And, and then so that they can start making plans, both instructionally and both, you know, kind of personally at home. And, you know, so Tuesday night, our admin team is getting together to make some final decisions. And then Wednesday, we're putting together communication in the in the distance learning guide that, that, that you're just going to see tonight. And then, you know, tonight we have the so tonight.
So, the work has, has been done and, and I, I just, it's my misunderstanding that we weren't, we were still thinking about that piece. So, I'm with you now.
Yeah, no, so I, I think it's good, I just think it's good backdrop to, to, to share with everybody that we, we, we have made some decisions around the student's schedules and we want to, we want to hear the feedback, but we want, we want the public to understand you know, the evolution of the thinking around the models. And all along, we knew that there is not going to be, there is going to be constraints and challenges with any, any, you know, schedule that we, that we went with. And we see reg, we see regional districts struggling similarly with, with the same, with the same challenges. So, but one of the things that I know is that we, we have made decisions based on a, a set of values and and a set of circumstances and, and certainly put in supports and are continuing to put in supports. And the thinking is continuing to evolve and even in our discussion today because this is brand-new information for folks and, and it's, it's a lot to process that we are open to, you know, to, to evaluate decisions and, and making improvements. And that's, that's, that's just part of our business. We're, we're a learning organization and I keep repeating that, you know, in our, in our labor teams and with parents, we're, that's what we do. And we do it well. If you, I believe what in the spring was a group of educators and, and parents and staff who were really able to come together at, at moments' notice and make you know, and provide some not optimal experiences, but, but, but some strong experiences, knowing full well that have some holes that we needed to fill and work towards that. So, I just want to say that right now where we are, yeah, I'm just coming to a close Toby, I know it, I'm just going, I, I just know that I wanted to know, I wanted the board to know that tonight, you know, that the, the schedules that we see are, are well putting forward and the, the board is, is really voting on the OSPI requirements. Again, those, the health requirements, the statutory education requirements and those additional expectations.
Okay.
Bob.
Toby's up.
Thanks, I appreciate understanding more about the process. And I think it's important for the public to understand that as well. The shift from the semester model that we've had for a long time to a quarter model is fairly dramatic. What other school districts locally have made that change? Are we going about this on our own?
Right now, just off the top of my head, I know Enamclaw and I believe Federal Way are moving to a quarter system. And I can, I can poll other superintendents. I just know it's, this kind of conversation has been circulating amongst the, the region in terms of their secondary schools, so. Each one are probably, it's was similar. When you go this way the consequences, when you go this way, these are the consequences. But but it might be, it might be good also to just the, the decisions that have been made.
Did you say we are voting on the quarter system tonight or that's minutia that we, no, I don't mean to trivialize it. That's a detail that we are not, that will be ascertained later. Do I have to cast a vote on a quarter system tonight?
I don't think we heard your response Slade.
No, no, board, I would say, I, I have not, I'm, I'm not aware that, that board schedules, that, that hasn't been up to, that I'm, you know, that I'm, that I've seen before.
I, I missed it. Just yes or no, I'm not voting on a quarter system tonight, correct?
I've been like no, you're not.
Additionally, what we will be making a decision on doesn't limit our choices to be flexible, to learn and to adapt as we go forward.
Right. Yeah, I think, I think this right here is kind of just the I think this, this little conversation right here is just kind of the nut of what I wanted to clarify with this meeting. Is that when you come down to the refine of what the board is actually called on to vote on versus not voting on but approving the plan, you know, it's just, it's just a little bit of a nuance there that it's hard to straight out. And, and now that you've explained it, I, I have it, I have it straight in my mind, but I didn't when we started, so. So, yeah, we're voting on a resolution and we're approving a plan.
So, can I, I'm, I'm sort of thinking of OSPI as this like large bureaucracy, please fill out this form. There's no creativity. Here's, thank you very much, you know, check, check, check. And we're going to approve that tonight. And then, there's the creativeness of our staff and our principals who are going to figure out the, you know, quarters, you know, how do you do math? Or, you know, are you going to lose math in that summer nine-week period? You know, all that, all those little minigitty things? We're not actually voting on any of that. Is that correct? Because that's not our job. We want to hear, we want to hear people what they're saying. I sort of feel of us as we're like the filters that come, or not filters, but we're the people who hear what the, the public say and we make sure that message gets out to the staff. We're not voting on that. But we are telling OSPI that we prioritize safety in our schools, that we will follow the guidelines and that we are doing our due diligence.
Right, that, oh, right, that OSPI has 24 sections in it that basically you are confirming and they're filled in and then you're going to vote on, on that were those requirements. And then and one of the timelines that we're, I'm not sure the public knows this too, but we, we the, I've seen feedback that you should slow down and slow down and slow down, but I know the state isn't allowing us to slow down. We have to submit this, the, the template, the the, these 24 requirements, I have to provide OSPI that information on Monday, by Monday. And and it doesn't, it, it, again, it doesn't allow a lot of
Yeah, you got a little delay Slade, your bandwidth might be.
Weak feedback and it's okay. Yeah.
I have a technical question related to that.
I think that's what's the, what is one of the most go ahead.
There's also been some suggestion that perhaps we should delay the start of school. Is that even, you know, something that is possible or is that, you know, what are the restrictions around that? Or do we have flexibility to even contemplate that?
That decision would have to be be a decision. Our school calendar is governed by our, our collective bargaining agreement. And it is, it really is able for us to, to start later. Oh darn it, I'm going to go, I have to go back out and come back in.
Yeah, you're breaking up pretty badly.
Like
Go ahead Dan.
I can take a crack at it. We, the, in, anything that would impact our student days that OSPI would recognize as days of would force us to then push back the school year. And, and then inside that are different constraints and agreements that we have in our collective bargaining agreement that would have to be revisited essentially. So, it's, it, it would be a we, we are looking at different ways that we can start the year to provide orientation and onboarding and some community building and teacher-student interactions all, all the while while we try and maintain those as school days. Because if we, if we lose them as school days, the impact is, is pretty significant for the whole system.
Yeah, thank you. I, I suspected, I, I kind of knew the answer already, but actually your response to this is another question. If we spend some time here as we start doing those activities, that nibbles away at the first nine-week quarter. That, that means the second nine-week quarter is going to, you know, look, just going to have more hours of content or more hours of instruction because we've already gone through that ramp-up period. I know you're thinking about that, but that's a, that's a challenge in any model that we, that we move forward with.
I had to, am I better now?
Yeah, you're better now.
Okay, I think I cleared all the devices in the house.
I'm familiar with that process. Does any, any of the other board have questions right now before we just kind of run, run through it one more time?
So, when we get to the real meeting, that's Danny, Greg, Rebecca, that's when you guys will be explaining in more detail about your plans or no, or you're just here to help? Because we love seeing you guys, which we do.
I, I thought tonight that they, in the work session, they I think there's more questions around the, the schedule that they could spend more time providing, you know, broader context and information around the student's schedules. Because the board meeting is really situated where the, in the admin are, have about three to five minutes probably to share kind of the key parts of opening up in the fall. So, this is a great opportunity to expand on those, on the, on the
Okay, so then I'll, I'll jump in with my question.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So, Greg and Danny, this will be for you guys. We've gotten a lot of questions and I, and I, I think they're really valid and good questions to ask about if we have this the quarter system and you're, so you're doing math, you know, and it's the 1, 3, 5, 2, 4, 6, and you have math, the first, you know, I, I think of math as like an A and then you don't have math and then you have math in C. There's that sort of concern and I know you guys are thinking about this. And, and so I'm just, so before I go on and on and wave my hands more, I will ask you what you guys are thinking about that and I will, my dog and I will mute now.
The first thing I want to is that the conversation that helped us come to a place of determining the quarter, the three-course, nine-week quarter model was in the best interest of our students was a conversation that definitely surfaced all the challenges. So, the, I've tried to be pretty clear with my staff and with the parents that I just sent an email out today that that we have a list of known issues that we are going to need to problem solve and work on. That includes AP class pacing and content. It includes gaps of instruction and knowledge in our sequenced classes. It also, regardless of what model we chose, it also was going to include our performance-based and hands-on learning courses. So, there's a variety of, of things that we know that we're going to need to problem solve. The, the, the conversation with teacher leads around the gap of instruction is that you know, we've really shifted in education in the last several years away from a kind of time and effort model of learning and towards a standard-based model for learning. Where the expectation is that students will be able to demonstrate some competencies with their content as opposed to to, you know, do a series of activities. And when You know, do a series of activities. And when the focus is on those, when the focus is on on competencies, there's. There's a much better opportunity to be able to mitigate things like gaps of time, interruptions and learning. Even even students who come into the classroom with previous interrupted learning or gaps of instruction. There when when the focus of how we design instruction and design learning is around standards. We have found, and I'm not just saying this theoretically, we have literally found it to be true in our classrooms at the high school that we can handle those. Ranges of student knowledge and skill much more effectively than we could even five years ago. So when our teachers and and when the administrators were sitting around the table thinking about which. Set of problems do we want to solve with our two less than ideals possible schedules? It was pretty clear. That we would rather deal with the problems that come about from the quarter model. And and take advantage of the the things that it can do for us in terms of. Being responsive to the to the parent and student and staff feedback around simplifying the learning experience. Streamlining the the amount of time in front of screens. And reducing the overall amount of communication and complexity. That that families found themselves managing. We would rather deal with with the problems of around gaps of instruction and sequencing than. Then the problems that emerge from from running six periods in whatever configuration we explored and we explored eight different models. Half of them were quarter models and half of them were six period models. So I hope that that I'm fair in acknowledging first. There are definitely issues with the quarter model. And and there's probably issues we're not even aware of. And so just like there are lots of issues in the six period day model. No matter how often you run those classes and we're, we have a lot more confidence that we can handle the problems in the in the quarter model. Than we are that we can handle the problems. That will arise when we're trying to to manage six courses.
Can you read?
Yep.
I just wanted to say, Danny, that this is exactly the kind of, you know, you you're going to hear from I'm sure all of us nimbleness, innovation, et cetera, et cetera. And your your thinking there was crystal clear and made a whole lot of sense to me and. We can't do business the way we did, you know, three or four months ago. And it to the extent we have problems now, it's it's it sounds like a communication problem, which, you know, we can deal with. But thank you for the explanation and. Because I I do think we are going to have to change the way we do business and I have not had a chance to talk to, I've seen the email traffic on. From parents and I haven't had a chance to digest it yet, but thank you for the explanation because it makes sense to me that. And especially the way the methodology you went around by, you went about by to solve the problem. And and also expressing that we have a lot of sometimes are just bad choices and we choose the least worst. And. I think we need to be clear about that too with with parents to show that the trade offs that were involved and we had to make some.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Greg, did you want to add anything?
To add to Danny?
Yeah, yeah, that was that was well described. I do think I agree. It's it is. Both of these options are are less than ideal and and I think the value came in around, you know, what can we do to most. Significantly engage our students in a manageable schedule and and I think that reducing. The total number of of classes that they're they're juggling at any given time and teachers frankly for that matter too. And and so I I think that this is a call that's being made. That. Yes, there's definitely going to be possibility issues that we're going to have to address. And I I think one that you you mentioned Zabet. We're going to want to make sure that that gap gets filled either through support or through intervention. Also making sure that that gap's only nine weeks, right? And so that the students are taking a. Quarter, they also get math in C quarter or whatever model we pick up for for second semester. So. You know, I think I do agree that that this is a. Call that's being made that we think is going to most be sustainable for for families and for our teachers and best engage our students.
Just add a bit about capacity. I mean, I. The the other important factor in my mind around how we set ourselves up for the best possible success is that. We need to, as a system, we need to have capacity. We need to be able to have some. Some energy and some time in order to respond to what we yet don't know. We cannot build an operational program that is that so stretches and so consumes all of our resources. From the from day one that we don't have any realistic way of being able to. Meet the needs of students who are not engaging or showing up or who are being profoundly unsuccessful in this model or. And and then, you know, fill in the blank with whatever other challenges emerge from this. So I I think that. That was an important consideration around what what model will give us more capacity. And it was, and and I'm not just talking about e- even staff capacity. I'm also talking about, you know, the capacity of families. Capacity of students. And we did learn some important lessons in the spring and and we collected a lot of data and we talked to a lot of individual students and families. And it showed us that that we need capacity when we're going to try and take on this coming school year.
Yeah, I appreciate that that comment. Danny, I really thought about that angle of it, but I think you're. You're obviously right and and very wise to to leave yourself some room to work in. Toby, did you have something?
I recognizing that this, you know, this proposal really came out in the last 24 hours or so. To teachers and staff as well. So I think everyone's trying to get their head around, how do I teach a semester in nine weeks? And, you know, what does capacity mean at an individual level as well as a family level? And and these are, you know, issues that you've been wrestling with over time. And, you know, it's going to continue to take some time for an optimal schedule system to to be fleshed out and for. For staff to understand how to, you know, how to provide the classes and the educational opportunities virtually that aren't naturally done virtually. You know, it's a lot of the electives, for example. Those are things that were identified in your letter as work yet left to do. And there's plenty of that around the corner, I'm sure. I assume we're sticking to a standards based grading. Moving forward in this virtual model and in system.
Yeah, that that's definitely our our plan. It's secondary to to continue that transition over to standards based later. I think it, I think it fits perfectly well as as Danny referenced. Particularly in this distance learning model to be able to to assess learning toward a standard as opposed to. You know, simply, you know, marching through a set of assignments and so forth. I think understanding learning and understanding competency. For our students and helping having our teachers help our students make that growth is is the perfect opportunity to make that shift this year.
Another thing I appreciated, sorry, real quick, the the one of the email communications that went out that clarified what happens during. An hour and 20 minute. Class online and that is, it sounds like there's a lot of flexibility provided to the instructor, to the teacher, to use that time effectively. And it may be a little bit different by subject or by teacher and their style and the content they're they're navigating with the students. But the intent is not to have students staring at the computer the whole time. There's. There's going to be effort to provide more active learning breakout rooms, you know. One on one. Help and and other things like that. And I think empowering the teachers. With that flexibility is critical because they're ultimately, they're the ones that are the professional educators. And and they'll need that that support and that flexibility.
And just to be clear, how does the quarter system affect Chautauqua or does it affect it at all? Rebecca?
Yeah, it's like that's not, we just have a very different schedule at Chautauqua. So we're, we have, we're not changing to a quarter schedule the same way that the middle school and high school. Are we still have a semester system and then we do progress monitoring kind of like a like a where we have conferences. In the middle of each semester, we don't have grading in the same way. So at Chautauqua, we'll still focus on our core academics. So. There we focus on math and literacy are the core that'll be taught in the morning when we have kind of more focus for our students. And then in the afternoon, we'll have a half hour block for like social studies and science or theme thematic studies. And then our specialist times and like a class meeting check in. And so so we're our our core is it is. Any more consistent throughout the throughout the school year because of the the framework for an elementary model with one classroom teacher. It's just a very different dynamic than. You know, what we're looking at at middle school and high school where they have a lot of different requirements and and classes they need to take.
Oh, can I go back? Greg and Danny, sorry, Rebecca, I feel like it's the middle and high school show, but I know there are a lot of people concerned who are going to that Chautauqua as well. But I I would love, since we have 50 people on this call, could you? You just sort of briefly address standards based grading for people who don't quite understand that and get a little. Panicky when they hear that, would either of you like to do like, I know this is impossible, I'm sorry, impossible, but like a. Two minute. Don't be afraid of standards based grading. Synopsis. Please.
I can start. And and just to clarify, you know, originally we had intended at the high school to be 100% standards based grading this year. That was the. Stake we put in the ground 18 months ago and had been building towards it. And then, of course, the pandemic last March really altered that. Timeline. So all the teachers who who of their own volition have chosen standards based grading, they will continue to. Do so and and it will take different forms. But there will be teachers who will not use standards based grading this coming year at the high school. So there will continue to be a mix. Of traditional grading and standards based grading. I do want to, I do want to say that I'm. That I'm very excited about the shift that we've undertaken to towards standards based grading. It is. It is greatly improved our instruction and our assessment. It's allowed for. Much better and more clear learning targets for students to aim towards. It's it's challenged students to. Be clear about what they know and it's given them some freedom around demonstrating when and how they know that. It, the the most confusing part of standards based grading by far is trying to. Is trying to understand the relationship between the individual assignments and the the grade, the end, like how those individual assignments add up to a grade. Because it is, it is not about accumulating points and making sure that your points cross some finish line that you are aiming for. It's more about. Are you demonstrating that you have mastered the content? And or that you've reached the standard in that content. And so the. For for anyone who's anxious or concerned about standards based grading. The first thing to do is to be in good communication with your your teacher about that. We are going to be, you know, as we as we honestly normally do, we lean upon our teachers to. To be clear about what their grading practices are, how they're arriving, like what student work will contribute towards a grade. What students can do to improve their grade if they want to and. And that will look different teacher to teacher, subject to subject. And so. And I think honestly, our teachers do a great job of that. I'm really, again, proud of the work that our team does. So the. We haven't released our student schedules yet. So so parents and students don't actually know who their who their teachers are yet. But that will be coming soon in the next week. And and then that's a good opportunity to to begin. Reaching out to to teachers and in finding out how will it work this year in your classroom.
I I would just add, you know, I think I think that describes it well. It it's really a proficiency model where where students are demonstrating. Their proficiency against a set of standards and skills that we want students to know and be able to do. And. Really, I I think one of the advantages of moving to standards based grading system is just a, it's it's a real, it's a much more equitable grading model. For students in that doesn't necessarily assess how much they get done, but it says assesses their knowledge. It is, it facilitates a conversation between teachers and students about their progress and about their growth over time. And it's a, it's an accessible system that that also. What I like about it is it not only facilitates that conversation, but also a lot of self reflection, a lot of. Teacher student dialogue in a way that's much more authentic in a in a and and focused on learning. So I I appreciate all those conversations that I'm seeing grow at McMurray.
Thank you very much. I think that helps I think people to wrap their heads around it. Thanks.
Okay, so we're down to probably about the last 15 minutes. So. Board members, this is your last chance to ask any questions about the overall plan and. The amendment and the resolution. The OSB amendment and the resolution. So if you have anything you're still confused about, now's the time. If not.
Well, I, so we are not going to be asking questions during the board meeting, is that?
Oh, yeah, we are. We are. Yeah, this is the high level though. In the board meeting, you can ask each individual staff member about their specific element and there'll be a lot of detail.
Actually, I have questions for you.
Yeah, this is the high level version.
One of the, when we do get to the board meeting. I I do recognize that there is a high volume of. Public comment. And there's also three that were some.
You're on delay again, Slade.
And so I think.
Were you saying you're going to try to try to manage the public comment? Or are we just going to read through it all and take the time?
I would, I would, I would like the board to amend the agenda so that we allow time for all the comments.
Yeah, I agree.
And I. Can I make a suggestion about, could we skip board member remarks too, so that we allow more time for the public and others? Just a suggestion.
I don't know if we need to skip them. If people can. They have something to say, I think they should say, I don't think any of us are going to be extremely lengthy, but I don't want to limit the opportunity to make those remarks. All right.
But I say one more thing about our about our. Greg and I have been really clear in our conversations with, along with Andrew Gus, Assistant Principal at the high school, that we we are calling this a first semester plan. Because i- if there are, if it is clear that this is not working. And we need to pivot to a six period semester schedule for second semester, then we want to make sure that folks know that. That that's what we'll do. That we're not locking ourselves into something that ends up being ineffectual or not meeting the needs, you know, of our community. And that we really want to be paying close attention to how it goes once we get it going.
Appreciate that. Rebecca, go ahead.
I think that most of the concerns you're getting have been from high school and middle school. So I didn't share much, but I do want, you know, like I have had, I've been. Managing some questions and concerns from the public also. And so there it's very mixed in our in our community. Most of our Latino families and a lot of our families who maybe aren't writing you letters and emails, you know, really made a really strong request for more live lessons. And for times online where the teachers are accessible to answer questions and work through problems. And so they're super pleased with our plan because it allows for that time. And so that is. And so that is what they were asking for. And then we, so we have, we have a mixture of families that want more online time with live teachers, which we're providing, but then there's people that want even more. And then some, some community members really want the independence to just follow their own schedule and have kids off screens. And so we're kind of creating this balance in our schedule between meeting the needs of families that want the option of doing work offline and those parents that want more online support. And so that's kind of, when you look at a schedule, you'll see that, that there's a, it might say an hour for math in all grade levels, but the truth is, like in kindergarten, it's probably gonna be 15, 20 minutes followed by teacher support and some play in small groups. So it is, it will be developmentally appropriate and it is kind of balancing those needs of families, depending on the age of their student and kind of their comfort level. They'll have some choice in how they interact with the materials. So, and that's something that I've been kind of fielding questions from parents about it. And, and we do support doing some small group online learning, in-person learning. Sorry, whenever we're able to, outside, we're just, we just know that the health department, it says we, we can't do that right at this point, but it is something we're still looking into and we will continue to look into that later. We've just been focusing on our distance learning plan because we know that's our first step right now. So those are the things I've been hearing from Chautauqua, in case you, in case you've only been hearing from middle and high school, but fielding a lot of questions here. I'm trying to keep parents engaged with kind of some flexible planning within what we need to provide for the state.
Thanks Rebecca. All right. Looks like we are just about out of time. Any final questions or words?
Jody, are you there? Somebody want to send me the most recent? We're, we're different channel for the, the board meeting, correct?
Nope, we're on this channel.
Same channel, okay.
Just stay tuned. Stay tuned, we'll probably, we'll probably add, well, we could give ourselves a five-minute break now if we're done with this segment and.
That would be good and you could, getting a glass of water or are you?
I'm hoping somebody can put some easy, easy listening on.
No. Well, thank you, thank you, Dan. I, I found this personally very helpful for you guys to spend this hour with us and clarify what we're, what we're going forward with and the thought, thinking that went into the proposed, well, the, the plan, not the proposed one, the plan. And I think that that's much clearer for all of us now that you've been able to explain it to us all at once. So we appreciate your time.
This gives you a chance to restart your computer and router.
Yeah, and go send your kids outside. All right, five minutes, five minutes.